Thank you very much, but good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Jackson Public Schools Board June 21st meeting. Thank you all for attending the meeting this evening. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance that will be provided through our high school division and Dr. Murray will introduce our student.
Good evening.
This is Bert, Dr. Gray, board members. It is my privilege this afternoon to introduce to you Mr. Caleb James, 10th grader at Jim Hill High School. Caleb James is a rising 10th grader, 10th grade IB Scholar at Jim Hill High School. He is the son of Walter and Tamara James. Not only is Caleb a member of Jim Hill's Band of Distinction and school Socrates, he's very active in his church, new guest man. Get me on that.
See there?
That says something, doesn't it, Doc?
You tell your pastor on you. I'm telling your pastor on you.
You got me there, Doc. Where he plays drums. He's a member of the youth and young adult ministry and he serves as a member of the Young Jets of Praise. As an IB Scholar, Caleb is passionate about community service. He is currently a second grade camp counselor at the Stupat Community Service Summer Program. Last week Caleb and the Central Jackson Soccer Organization returned from College Station, Texas where their team represented Mississippi in the regional competition. Caleb plans to attend LSU where he will study to become an engineer. Please help me welcome Mr. Caleb James.
May he please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Caleb, if you will stay for a second, our colleague, Dr. Otha Burton, would like to present you with the certificate for doing the Pledge of Allegiance for us this evening. Dr. Burton?
James, how are you? Good, strong hands. That's important. We thank you for leading us into Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance for the flag, very important. We are Americans and we always should honor our flag and our country. We're proud of your credentials. You're a well-rounded young man. You got a bright future and you're a product of JPS. So we want to thank you. We have the certificate of appreciation on behalf of the Board of Trustees of the Jackson Public School District and we thank you very much.
Our prayer of invocation will be presented by Reverend Dr. Herdestine Wilkinson and will be introduced by our colleague, Dr. Lynn.
Thank you. Today, a prayer will be coming from a first-of-egregits friend of mine, thank God for her, did not even recognize her walking in the door, thank God. But let me just give you a little bit of history of her. She is the Reverend Dr. Herdestine Wilkinson. She is a native Mississippian and a graduate of Tugalu College, the Mississippi Baptist Seminary, and Dayspring Christian University. She is a skilled mentor and trainer in the pastoral ministry field. She is a producer, a playwrighter, and dramatics. She is married and have a family Christian counselor, who is a family Christian counselor, who counsels women who have experienced domestic violence. She is also a pastoral life coach and a theological instructor. In the community, she volunteers to provide Bible study to homeless people. She is vice president of the One Church, One Child for the State of Mississippi. She is a motivational speaker and teaches etiquette to young women. She is retired from Bell South Telecommunication Company where she worked for many years. Minister Wilkinson is married to the Reverend Dr. James Wilkinson and they reside in Clinton, Mississippi. Together, they have four adult children and grandchildren. She is a member of the Pleasant Grove MB Church of Bentonia. And as a minister, she believes that the Holy Scripture is their inspired and infallible word of God and that it contains all that is needed to help us love one another and our neighbor as ourselves. Ladies and gentlemen, join me in giving a round of applause for Minister Herdestine Wilkinson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let us bow. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we humbly come before you today and we lift up the JPS superintendent, the teachers, the board members, the students, the faculty, as well as all of these great cloud of witnesses that are here today. And God, we ask you to just touch, as they began the meeting, that you would give them good decision-making, that you were imparting them wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and that they'll be able to come to a consensus in which they agree on the decision that they have made. And God, we also ask you that when difficult decisions are made, that we thank you that you give them right judgment so they'll be able to do things that would help increase, help give favor to this school district. And finally, Lord, we ask you to give them a visa mentality. Give them vision with the V. With the I, give them integrity. With the S, give them structure. And with the A, give them accountability. So in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Wilkinson. If you will stay for a second, Dr. Burton would also like to provide you with the certificate for your participation this evening.
Minister Wilkinson, thank you, sir, for making sure you're here, ma'am. Minister Wilkinson, we thank you for being here this evening. It's always important, in fact, it's necessary that we invoke the presence of God in anything we do, in our private lives, in our public lives, in any organization. If it was honored through him, can we serve and can we be successful. So we thank you for your words of encouragement and the offering of prayers for this district, for all of us who serve. It's important. And we hope that those who are listening will continue to do that day and night. Prayer is important. So we thank you for being here and on behalf of the Board of Trustees of the Jackson Public School District, like to present you a couple of things, this certificate and also a little bag with some goodies in it. So we thank you very much, ma'am.
Reverend Wilkinson, are you accompanied by anyone tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you very much for coming. You know, I fail to recognize Caleb's parents and our school community, so please, if you are, please stand and let us celebrate you. We have a quorum of our members with everyone present. I will now entertain adoption of the agenda.
So move second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt the agenda. Any additions? Those in favor? Thank you. We'll now move to the reading and approving of the minutes of the June 7th meeting, special meeting, the June 7th regular meeting, and the June 14th work session.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration as noted.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in second that we adopt the approving of the minutes of June 7th, June 7th regular, special, and the June 14th work session. Questions? Those in favor? Thank you. We're now down to public participation. Attorney Turner?
Board members, I have no one who's signed up for public participation.
Alrighty, thank you. Board members, I'd now like to take the opportunity to present a group who has brought us good news for, both for, to benefit our children and to also improve our schools as well. The Jackson Heart Foundation is here this evening. Dr. Harper Stone, who is our chair, and Dr. Clay Hayes, who is our vice chair, Lizzie Lacoste, who is our executive director, and Bill Lee and Gwen, I see, about McKee, are members of the Jackson Heart Foundation. They have a special presentation that they'd like to provide to us this evening.
Thank y'all for having us and my name's Harper Stone and Clay Hayes and the other members of the group. We started Jackson Heart Foundation in August 2009 because we wanted to make a difference within our own community and Jackson metro area. And so we started off doing, trying to do a detection of heart disease and we screened between 250 and 350 people a year, about a $2,500 test that was free that was done down at the fairgrounds in Jackson and we made a lot of difference on picking up heart disease, diabetes, and hypertension. But we realized we really needed to break the cycle. We were picking up people that already had it. We said, "We need to do it through our children" because our children are really going to be the way that we change what, how we come out in our lifestyles and develop better health. So we started off doing teaching gardens and the first school we did was the Davis Magnet School. We set up teaching gardens for the children. They went and planted all their vegetables and they learned about them and they end up eating them and they brought hopefully that information home to their parents and we hope that they continue to do that. We did it again at Casey Elementary School and then we followed up with the Boys and Girls Club. So we're trying to teach children to eat healthy, that eating fresh vegetables, that this is all good. And then we went on and realized also an important part of cardiovascular health is having somebody know how to do CPR. It's an unfunded mandate in the state that is required before you graduate to be able to do it. So we have supported three public schools here in Jackson, Cowalway, Provine, and Jim Hill. All three of those public schools have CPR kits and are being taught before they graduate. The goal was obviously to be able to do it for the whole state, but we're focused in Jackson area. So we also going along the lines of trying to keep our children healthy, we realized that a lot of what we eat in public schools, and not just public schools, all schools, is not necessarily the most healthy food because a lot of it's fried. And you know, combi ovens are very expensive to buy and those are the things that are going to make you the most healthy meal for that particular day. So we have raised money to buy two combi ovens for the Jackson Public Schools that will be matched, that will be matched by the state of Mississippi, that will match with two more public, I mean, two more combi ovens. So it'll be four combi ovens for the schools and this is for the 2016, 2017 year. We would love to continue to do this every year if we're able to raise the money because we feel like we've got, there's about 36 that need to be replaced and that'll be our goal to try to work towards that so our children, we'd healthier and hopefully will change our lives in the future and prevent them from having a heart attack or a stroke. With that, I'd like to present, Clay, come on up, and Lizzie, Gwen, and Bill.
Benita, thank you.
Benita, Benita is on our board too. She, thank God she is. She's been wonderful.
And also, Mark is here. Mary is in Chicago, I think, someplace, accepting something wonderful. And thank you, Mark, for being here. Gwen?
Yeah. Gwen, come on over here, y'all. Come on. Come on in the middle, here. Oh, come on, you're in the middle, Beth, Gwen. No, much better looking people, y'all. Let me get my right. You're good? Good. That was a straight lead. Good. Great. See that model, please? Thank you. Thank you, Benita. Thank you, Benita. Thank you. Do it again next year, right?
Yes, sir. Save this spot.
There you go.
Thank you so much. You know, the Jackson Heart Foundation, we've been talking about for a while, what we can do to get our kids and our city healthy. What better way than for them to have combi ovens, to have fresh, good, fresh fruits and vegetables, and then to have food that's really baked and cooked in a really healthy kind of way. I think what it does is to help our parents to also follow the same track in getting kids healthy. So thanks to the Jackson Heart Foundation and I'm encouraging others who might want to help us hurry and get these combi ovens in our school system across the district would be just absolutely terrific. Thank you, Jackson Heart Foundation, for getting this started and we look forward to our gala next year. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President, Board of Trustees. We at Jackson Public Schools, under the leadership of the superintendent and the guidance of the Board of Trustees, are focused on three wildly important goals. Number one, to increase academic performance and achievement. Number two, to increase average daily attendance for scholars, teachers, and staff. Number three, to attract and retain high-quality teachers, administrators, and staff. We at Jackson Public Schools continue to wear wigs, have fits, and say our ABCs. Our mission is simple, our task is succinct. We are building stronger schools together. All right. I didn't see anybody in a blue t-shirt say that. Can we just repeat? Dude, I got you to smile. There you go. Great evening to all. Student Code of Conduct Survey. The Jackson Public School District invites parents and students to offer their valuable opinions in an important survey. The purpose of the Student Code of Conduct Survey is to collect information regarding the fairness and effectiveness of our current student code of conduct. Participant feedback will remain anonymous and will only be used as part of a summative report. You can take the survey by visiting the JPS website. Summer Feeding Program. The JPS Food Service Department Free Summer Feeding Program is underway for children's ages 18 and under. The program, which lasts until July 15th, is part of the district's effort to address the hunger needs of thousands of students across the summer months. The serving time is from 11:00 a.m. till 12:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. The Summer Feeding Program will be closed July the 4th. A list of 2016 Summer Feeding Program sites is available on the JPS website. For more information, please contact our Food Service Department at 601-960-8911. Online Registration. Please be reminded that online registration for new and returning scholars will begin on July the 12th, 2016. Parents and guardians must visit their child's school to begin registration. Parents or guardians must make an initial visit to the school of their, in their attendance zone to begin the online registration process. Parents can locate their child's school attendance zone on the online registration page of the JPS website or you may contact the JPS Office of Enrollment Services at 601-960-8852. Completing online registration requires an access to a computer with a connection to the internet. Computer labs will be set up at each school for parents who do not have access to a computer. Schools will be open Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Schools will be closed for lunch break from 11:30 a.m. till 12:30 p.m. Hours will be extended each Thursday until 6:00 p.m. to accommodate our parents. Sywell Middle School selected to receive grant to teach character-building skills. The Jackson Public School District is proud to announce that Sywell Middle School was recently selected to receive $47,919.42 in an educational grant to implement a program that will help the school promote various types of character-building skills. The Sywell Middle School, Sywell Middle School will become one of nearly 2,500 schools across the world to implement the Leader in Me Program and the first in the Jackson Public School District. The program will enhance the curriculum by assisting the school to develop a culture that encourages students to better themselves both inside and outside the classroom. Let's celebrate Chi Nalo Evans as our chief academic officer of middle school and Ms. McIntyre principal. Thank you. Murrah High School alumnus wins NBA championship. That was a slow clap because there's some Golden State fans. We want to congratulate Jackson Public Schools' Murrah High School alum and Jackson native NBA player, Mo Williams. Mo Williams scored two points and played five minutes in the Cavaliers' title victory over the Golden State Warriors. Williams averaged 1.5 points in 4.8 minutes per game in the finals. He was one of just eight Cavaliers to play in Game 7. Williams is a 2001 graduate of Murrah High School. One more time, celebrate Mo Williams. If you're listening, Mo, we love you, man. Very proud of you. JPS Coach and Educator selected for MAC Coaches Hall of Fame. Hey, Coach. Would Coach Herman Sanders please come forward? Ladies and gentlemen, please help me celebrate Coach Herman Sanders. Coach Herman Sanders is the former athletic director and boys' basketball coach at Wingfield High School. He will be inducted into the Mississippi Association of Coaches Hall of Fame on Friday, June 24th at the Hilton Hotel in Jackson. For the past 35 years, Coach Sanders has focused his attention on coaching track, football, baseball, and basketball in Jackson, Grenada, and LaFlore County Public High School systems. His combined winnings in all sports include 24 district championships, nine North-South State Championships, and four state championships. During his 18-year career in coaching basketball, Sanders compiled a record of 378 wins and 193 losses. Sanders has received numerous accolades for his esteemed career. He was inducted in the Mississippi Valley State University Athletic Hall of Fame in 1998 and into the SWAC Athletic Hall of Fame in 2012. Coach Sanders was the head coach of the 2012 Mississippi Alabama All-Star Game. He has served terms as president and vice president of the Mississippi Association of Coaches. Coach Sanders recently retired from Jackson Public Schools after 36 years of dedicated service to public education. During that time, he has been a teacher, coach, mentor, role model, and friend to so very many. Ladies and gentlemen, please help us celebrate Coach Sanders on his accomplishment.
Yes.
Just real quick, if I may, Dr. Gray, just on a very personal note, my wife, who's a 2001 Wingfield graduate, just talk about the stretch beyond just athletics, still talks about Coach Sanders as one of her greatest mentors and so it's a very personal thing too. And also the stretch beyond academics is I could tell you, Harriet has never laid foot on a basketball court unless it was by accident. So we also appreciate you and we love you too, Coach Sanders.
Thanks, Coach Sanders. Ladies and gentlemen, that does almost conclude the superintendent's announcements and reports. I have to, I'd like to yield the floor to a very special man this evening. Allow me to walk you back about three years, almost four years ago, I was wrestling with a very difficult decision and really was not sure where, which direction to take. And so I picked up the phone and called this young man and I asked him just for about five minutes of his time, in the middle of a very busy day, he said, "Come on down." And when I arrived, we sat not only for five minutes, but five minutes turned into multiple meetings over the course of his tenure here on our school board. Dr. Otha Burton is serving his last board meeting and I wanted to allow this young man an opportunity to share with us about his experiences and about his time here. He is, in my opinion, in my humble estimation, not only a wise visionary, an elder statesman, but the only other man that I can go to for very sound, honest advice besides my own dad. Would you please help me celebrate Dr. Otha Burton?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gray, for those canned, canned words. Very canned words. It won't be long, as you know, I'd like to just get right to what I want to say and get out of the way. But I want to take a few minutes to our board president, Ms. Burton, to my fellow colleagues on the board, some wonderful people, to our superintendent, Board Attorney, District Counsel, Ms. Mumford, and all these wonderful people who make JPS work. I came here in 2010, humble and appreciative, and I leave, this Mumford remind me, I got a few more days here. I leave in a few more days, humble and appreciative. I, let me first just say thank you to a few people. I first thank God for the opportunity to serve. In fact, I won't say on my tombstone, I won't get there yet, but I hope something says public service. And that's maybe not necessarily by design, I look back over the past 40, 50 years, but that's what I've been. Next to being called to be a minister when you're in public service, government, teaching, those kind of things.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Gray for those canned, canned words. Uh, very canned words. It won't be long, as you know, I'd like to just get right to what I want to say and get out of the way. But I want to take a few minutes, uh, to, uh, our Board President, Ms. Burton, to my fellow colleagues on the board, some wonderful people, to our Superintendent, Board Attorney, District Counsel, Ms. Mumford, and all these wonderful people who make JPS work. Uh, I came, uh, here in twenty-ten, uh, humble and appreciative. And I leave, uh, this Mumford remind me, I got a few more days here. I leave in a few more days, humble and appreciative. I, uh, let me first just, just say thank you to, um, a few people. I first thank God for the opportunity to serve. In fact, uh, I won't say on my tombstone. I won't get there yet. But I, I hope something says, uh, "Public Service." And, and that's, uh, maybe not necessarily by design. I look back over the past forty, fifty years, but, um, that's what I've been. Uh, next to being called to be a minister when you're in public service, government teaching. Those kind of things, you, you really have to have a love and a passion. You have to have a calling for it. Sometimes you may know your call till you've been there a while. And, and I am, uh, see, that's an amen. In my church it is. But, but I thank God. And I, I thank Mayor Harvey Johnson back in twenty-ten when he, uh, he, he, uh, approached me about serving. Didn't have any idea, Ms. Burton, about being on the board, but, uh, and I was, I had left government after twenty-five years. I was at Jackson State as a, you know, Dean, Associate Dean and a Chair. And he says, "I know you're busy, but, uh, what do you think about coming on the board?" I was surprised because Mayor Johnson, I talked every now and then about things and, uh, I said, "I'm honored that you asked me, but like I always do, I gotta have a day or two to pray about it." Talking to with my wife, she kicked me on out and said, "Do it, man." And, and I'm glad I did. And, uh, I first served finishing a term which was permissible at that time of one other board member. Had to be confirmed and all of that, and then got re- reappointed and confirmed, so that's how there's six plus years. Uh, I thank my wife. I promise you, I didn't talk about executive session discussions with her. But she often, um, uh, was there to, to hear me, um, make sure I stayed in my lane as a board member. Uh, that I served, uh, the district. And, uh, even though that was my passion, you had to have a helpmate to make sure you do that. And I thank her. Well, she's just raising hands. She don't like to stand. I'd like to thank Jackson State University. That's where I work. That's where the check comes from. For giving me and supporting me an opportunity to serve. And I, all you, y'all know, and my, and people who served before me and with me, that you, uh, if you're working someplace, they gotta support you doing it, right, Dr. Lynn? You're working for yourself, Mr. Hobbs. You know, you gotta be able to carve some time out, man. This is not just two, two meetings a month. This is, this is a commitment. Ain't, uh, I look back when I worked in my daddy's shoe shop, it's the hardest two hundred dollars I ever worked. That's the hardest two hundred dollars I ever. And he didn't pay me. Uh, but it's a passion. And, uh, my, my colleagues, again, thank you. I mean, uh, Dr. Gray, we got some good people on this board. Got some young blood, some seasoned blood. That's why I'm calling Ms. Burton seasoned blood. Mature. People who've been there, Dr. Lynn and, uh, who know our roles, but also are committed to making things happen with the Superintendent. And to all these wonderful people, uh, staff, teachers, principals, I mean, I've been, you know, I've been around a long time. I'm, I'm so impressed with who we have, Dr. Gray, who we're bringing in. You know, who you keep pushing and turning it over, you know, making us reach that, that dream. And that dream is making sure we teach our children, give them the tools of being able to have a life, have a career, have a passion. Uh, I'm gonna be long. The commitment to serve, uh, in, 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 in this capacity was not something that just came in twenty-ten. My wife and I, and our son, uh, in, uh, the district in the first grade, I come from St. Mary's, right? And, uh, from Boyd, Odyssey of the mind and all those things, and open doors and chastain and learning to play the saxophone, because he was playing the drum at first. He was playing it on the furniture. My wife said, "You gotta get that boy something else to play." All these dances ain't gonna work. So, and that, and to, and to Murrah. Uh, but not just what he, uh, in APEC, and, and to accomplish, but what the district did. Not just for him, but for every child that we have. We giving them so much more than, uh, uh, the books of learning. We giving them experience into life. We giving them food too. Am I that right, Dr. Gray? We feeding them. We give an opportunity to let their minds grow. And that's what we're about. Uh, we've got some good students. We've got some great students. We've got some average students. We got some students who are gonna learn a little bit later on in life. When JPS opens its doors, it's like a church, Dr. Gray. Whosoever will let them come. If they're in this district, I don't care who your mama is, your daddy is, your grandparents. When the door is open, if they are, if they live in this district and their parents are guardians, we serve them. We serve them as they come in. We take that tool and we mold it and shape it, just like that fine coach we talked about. And if you love education, you gotta love it. You're gonna work with them. First, second, third, twelfth grade, you're gonna, you're gonna work with them. And that's important. We're not a private school. I ain't got nothing against that. We're not a parochial school. I got nothing against that. We're not a school in the district where it's high income. I got nothing against that. We are who we are. We're in our skin and we know who we are. And I love the fact, the way we get there and do the job. It ain't about A, B, C district. I know that's how folks wanna grade you. It's about what you do, what your results are, what that person looks like down the road, because you can take a D student, and somewhere later in life, that person gonna be a creator, a maker of things. He's gonna be a good person, or she's gonna be a good mom. And that's what we want to do, be a character. I want us, as I leave, to keep the focus on the children. I, I might get a little emotional, you know, but keep the focus on the children. Whatever you do, whether you're attorney, whether you're whatever, is keep a focus on these kids in Jackson Public School that's urban, central city, inner city. That's who we are. That's our color. That's our, I'm not talking about race. That's our, that's who we are. That's our skin. We gonna take them. We gonna make them and mold them. Whether these folks are sitting here, there's another group after them, whether Dr. Gray is here, that's our role, and we must be passionate about it. Last thing I want to say is, uh, you know, every, uh, sometimes my wife be sleeping. When I go to bed at night, I say my prayer. When I wake up in the morning, I say my prayer. As I know, I'm a, I'm a creature still molded and shaped, but I pray for a lot of things, family, but I pray for this district. I call JPS out, you know? Call the name. And I want the folks who say they love us, even when they wanna complain about us, pray for us. Pray for us. Call the name out. Call Jackson Public School District. Call it out, say it. And, uh, it makes a difference now. It makes a difference. And, uh, just remember, whatever we think we wanna be, what we are, what we wanna leave on this earth, they ain't gonna remember your name. Only what you do for God and His Son will last. I'm through. Thank you very much, y'all. Oh, I do have one request. I do, I do have one request. And Mrs. Johnson, because we in his court now, can we take, can I impose to take a picture with my fine board? My Superintendent, my District Counsel, Board Attorney, Ms. Mumford, my wife, can we do that right quick? It won't take but a minute. And, and I want you to, if you can, this is my little bit of camera, because I know how long it takes.
All right, Madam President, Board of Trustees, that concludes Superintendent's report and announcements.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Gray. We'll move on to information items only. We have none. Information, uh, action items. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Ms. Burton, Dr. Gray, board members. Dr. Burton, I don't know who's gonna keep me on task now. Mr. Oppenheim, you have some big shoes to fill. Uh, board members, I'd like to present the monthly financial report for the month ended May thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. This report includes your statement of fund balance, your balance, uh, balance status report, your report of bank reconciliations, and also the district maintenance cash flow report. This is being presented for your approval. Motion for approval. It's been moved in second that we adopt the monthly financial report. Questions? Those in favor? Thank you, Ms. Miller. Um, I guess she'll need to stay. We'll move on to consent agenda finance.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration, there are five items under, five items under consent agenda items finance. And, um, if we could, Madam President, Board of Trustees, if, if you would indulge me, if we could take A, if you're going to take them collectively, I'd like to separate B out.
Uh, and D for, oh, that's approval, the surplus, okay. So, any others? I'll entertain a motion for, under consent, uh, agenda items finance. It was A, C, D, and E. It's been moved in second that we adopt items under consent agenda items A, B, C, and, oh, I'm sorry, A, B. Yes, D and E. Those in favor? Thank you, Dr. Gray.
Thank you, Madam President, Board of Trustees. Uh, we'll ask, uh, Mr. Davis and Ms. Shepherd and Ms. Miller to trifecta this next one. As you are aware, Representative Adrian Wooton, uh, State Representative for our area, has been so kind and generous to secure, uh, funds from the state legislature to help us, uh, to repave Key Elementary's parking lot along with the, um, practice field, I think, of Peoples' Middle School. And so we want to make sure we review that thoroughly, and there has been, I think, one adjustment that we want to talk about. So, uh, Sherilyn, if you would, Ms. Miller, if you would start, and then we'll pass around.
Thank you, Dr. Gray, Ms. Burton, members of the board. We had presented, um, for your approval, the bid for the repairs and upgrades at Key and Peoples'. Um, however, just hours ago, we received some information from one of the bidders that there was a concern, uh, that they expressed. And so we are asking at this point to reject all the bids that we have received and allow us to rebid the project, uh, the both of projects. Um, there is some issue with both vendors as far as meeting, um, meeting all the requirements. And so we think it's just cleaner at this point to reject, to ask that you reject all and then allow us to rebid the projects.
And Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration as well, uh, we are dealing with some sort of, uh, some degree of time of restraint. Uh, Mr. Davis and his team, uh, will need to be able to, um, move forward during the summer, obviously, before our scholars and teachers get back in the building. So, once we, uh, are able to move forward, we will bring this back as soon as, as possible to the next, uh, possible meeting, which may be as early as, it's hard to say right now. Okay, hard to say, okay. So, just so you know, it will, it will come back for you, uh, in the summer, though.
Other than the time restraint, uh, Madam President, with the, uh, getting it done before the schools start, is it, what about the, the funding? Is there any time constraints on that?
No, no, so the funding is available. It came through a legislative mandate actually last year. So we have no real time, timeframe on those dollars. Okay, and Representative Wooton, Wooton, uh, understands what's happening. Do, have we informed her? We will inform her. A- as I said, this came up about two hours ago. So we will make sure we make contact with her personally to let her know where we are. Terrific, thank you. Estefanine?
Thanks, Madam President. Thanks, Ms. Miller, for bringing this. I, just out of curiosity, where are these two projects with our overall, like, district infrastructure? I know we got a big report maybe a few months ago. Are, are these like high on the?
These are, um, projects that, well, let me give you a little history of where this came from. In, um, about two years ago, we noticed that there was some funding in the legislature. They had some funds kinda set aside for some other school districts, actually to do some infrastructure repairs. Actually Clinton had been receiving, uh, dollars from this bill, this mechanism for several years. And Representative Wooton went in on last, not this past term, but the term before, and actually was able to carve out two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our district to receive to do some of those type of repairs. One of the things that she wanted to do was to make sure that those funds were spent at schools in her area. She, we identified the needs of those schools, and she kinda picked the ones that we thought were, were, um, high on the list in that area. Um, Key, the parking lot at Key, we had, uh, I think, uh, Representative Benny Thompson was there some months ago, and it is in dire straits. Uh, but Representative Wooton was very supportive and, and helping us get this. And so she really, um, steered us in the direction of where she'd like these funds to be spent.
And, and so as, thank you for that. And as a follow-up, just because saying it came from the, the state is fun and interesting. I know there's clearly a lot of budget issues, but is this something that we could push our other local legislators to ask for funds in the future?
Absolutely. Um, it's, it's just, it was interesting how it was just kinda little known. My counterpart in Clinton, you know, has been recipient of this for a number of years. And, um, yeah, so, um, I was just really pleased to see Representative Wooton get in there and really fight to make sure that Jackson received, uh, part of that. And, uh, we certainly would welcome any of our, uh, legislative representatives to do the same.
So, so I might make the suggestion that should definitely be part of the agenda when you meet with our legislators.
Rest is yours, sir.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you so much, Madam President. I did have a chance to pass and, uh, thank, uh, Ms. Wooton, as well as her support, you know, of the district. And she did mention this, so I'm glad to see, uh, that we are progressing ahead with this because she did express some, some concerns. And I, and I did express to her that every penny is well appreciated and received, you know, uh, on behalf of my president. Uh, for, so thank y'all so much, and we definitely express the same, uh, level of gratitude to her for her, her gallant effort for looking out for us.
And, and thank you, Mr. Jones. We actually sent her a letter initially when we received the dollars. Um, because this is a quasi-grant coming through, um, the state, there are some other stipulations that we had to go through. Um, so it took us a little bit longer to get there, and then it came in the middle of the year, and of course, we have to wait until school gets out. So we have, um, I've personally spoken with her. We've sent a couple of letters. So we'll make sure that when we do, uh, ribbon cutting or something of that nature, that she is certainly there. Dr. Burton?
Good governors always talking about these impending cuts, so let's move with all deliberate speed.
Yes, sir, that's why I brought that up.
It will come in July. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
So this is being removed, right?
Yes, we're actually asking you to let, allow us to reject all so that we may proceed with the new bid. Entertainer motion.
So move.
It's been moved in second that we, uh, reject, uh, item A, approval of bid for repairs and upgrade at Key Elementary, Peoples Middle School and Sports Practice Field. Those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now move to consent agenda items general.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, uh, for your consideration, if it's the will of the board, we could take these consent agenda items, general A, B, C, D, E, F, and G collectively?
Board members? I'll entertain a motion. Is, is somebody?
So who?
I have a question. Well, I have a question on, uh, I think we want to move item G.
G.
Okay. Entertainer motion for items A through F.
So move.
It's been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda items A through F. Uh, those in favor?
I have a question, too.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, thanks, Madam President. I, I have a question just about a couple of these, um, uh, items. Or really, I guess, maybe a comment, too, about, um, one of them on item E with the Mississippi, jobs from Mississippi graduates. I appreciate the response in terms of, um, uh, how it aligns with, uh, Alimen Jackson. But I think it's something we really need to be deliberate about, too, you know, instead of just, you know, because it's there, they will eventually start working together. But I think we have to be really deliberate in the process in terms of working with Alimen Jackson, in terms of integrating all the various work.
Uh, yes, sir. We're, um, you know, as a matter of fact, we have had some, um, we, we understand that Alimen Jackson is going through some, uh, leadership adjustments and changes. And so, uh, Fred Murray's going to be, uh, of course, he's a co-chair of the high school committee, and, uh, we're going to make sure that we line those, those up appropriately, so.
Thank you. And then, my other question, and it's a little bit of a comment, too, on the district to district, uh, transfers. Colleagues, I, I've made a, I, I've kind of made a recommendation once or twice about, um, uh, potential changes to our policy around, uh, district to district transfers, uh, in review of the policies, uh, JBF and JBG, which are, um, I think noted in the actual documents. Um, you know, they're pretty, they're, they're, they kind of say that we, as a, as a board, can charge tuition for, um, students who transfer in. And I, I've heard, I think, maybe last year, maybe the year before, of Jacksonians who don't get spots at some of our special programs and students who have parents, you know, who live in other areas who apply and get into the programs, um, are sometimes, uh, given those spots. And so, I would be very interested if we were to take a really hard look at potentially, um, one, prioritizing Jackson kids, uh, unless, of course, the parent works in the district, um, and then, two, um, if there's still slots available, to think about, uh, charging tuition as a source of revenue, so. And the policies seem flexible enough to figure that out. So, that would be a, a suggestion that I have. As I know, last year, we got a lot of calls, because I think there was something maybe in the Heinz County School District where they had some issue. And so, we're, I was, I don't know if anybody else was getting a bunch of calls, but it made me think, um, about this possibility. And then also the fact that I had talked to a couple of families who weren't able to get into the IBs, APACs, um, special programs who lived inside of Jackson.
Uh, yes, sir. If, if, when you get those calls, call me, and I'll get Dr. Sargent to get on top of it, because I hadn't gotten any of those. Uh, but constantly, we're always, uh, taking a look at policy to make sure that it works well for us, uh, as a district. Because at this point, we, you know, we, uh, want to make sure the scholars that live in the city are attending our schools. Definitely a priority.
Absolutely.
So, I just, I just wanted to raise that because, you know, I'm sure I'll be poking and prodding with, uh, how we could, uh, be dealing with that.
Any other?
I'm sorry. Yeah, just, um, in reference to item C, uh, with the Frank and Covey, um, program.
Yes, sir.
Will we have, uh, once this program is completed, this training for Cywell, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will we have individuals there that will be, um, able to, uh, do a train the trainer? Someone that, that will be certified to continue that, that process as well? Would that, does this include, I saw the materials in there. But, but, oh, how is that?
I'll ask Ms. Evans to come up. Uh, it is specifically at this point for Cywell.
Sure.
Uh, however, uh, we want to make sure that it, oh, it keeps going. So regardless of leadership and, and student body, whomever is there, it goes on as long as the grant, uh, will continue. But Ms. Evans can add.
Good evening, Dr. Gray, um, Madam Board, President and Board members, Mr. Jones. Um, absolutely. Our goal is to create something that we could replicate. Although this school will be receiving as a part of this grant the materials, the Leader in Me book. If you're familiar with, uh, Stephen Covey and Seven Habits of Highly Effective People and Four Disciplines of Execution, those are the principles that they will be, um, implemented within the school. What is unique is that this, it won't be, um, spoken at students. It will be led by students. They will be tracking the data. They will be facilitating the leadership events and the conferences. So, it's a very different approach where students hands-on and not something done to students. What we hope is to create a model site where we could, um, find best practices, since they will be partnering with us and working with us over time. Uh, we'll be able to perfect that and then use some of those practices that work, um, where we have a, a track record in place and be able to duplicate it at all of our other sites.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and this is an excellent grant because I know everybody's, you know, pretty much been in the, I got the paperback, uh, except for Highly Effective People. I think it's beginning to change colors. However, the lessons in there, uh, are, are definitely sticking with me today. And so, this is great stuff, but I definitely, uh, glad to hear that it will enable our leaders to be able to, to continue this program once the grant does, you know, cease for, for, so we can continue the same, uh, implementation. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Any other questions? Those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. Now we'll, um, go to, uh, item G.
For your consideration, uh, Madam President, Board of Trustees, item G.
Entertainer motion?
Some more for.
Second.
Been moved in second that we approve consent agenda item, um, G. Discussion? Those, those, those in favor? Discussion? Did I hear something?
No discussion. No discussion.
Oh, those in favor? Okay. Thank you. Consent agenda items personnel.
Madam President, for your consideration and Board of Trustees, your consideration, personnel items, uh, there is one. We have one withdrawal of, uh, and it's, uh, D nine. D nine accepted a position, as you can see, uh, accepted another position, but that's the only, um, adjustment to personnel material.
Does everybody have a copy yet? No?
So, so just to be clear, so we're, accept another position, not in the district?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, so, uh, the reason I'm bringing it to your attention, so we can, this item has to come out of, uh, personnel package. But it was a recent change.
So, uh, uh, accept motion for approval with the exception of D nine under personnel.
So move.
Um, I have a question on, um, eight.
Can we get a second, then, get the question?
Okay.
Second.
Oh, second, Dr. Lee.
Yes, ma'am.
Item C eight. I really would like to have that one pulled for, for further discussion and understanding.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Do I, do I need to take back my motion?
You have to take back the motion.
Uh, I'll take back my motion.
Is there another? Well, Ms. Evans, is that it for the one that you were actually pulling, C eight?
Yes, okay.
So, if we, you have to withdraw that motion?
I withdraw it.
Okay.
And the second, somebody seconded it.
Mr. Dr. Lee. Okay.
Motion withdrawn. I'll now accept the motion for approval of personnel with the exception of C eight.
So move with the exception of C eight.
Second.
Discussion, those in favor, discussion? Yes. Just regarding C eight? Well, that's where we are.
Well, we, don't we have to talk about that in the second session?
Go ahead, yeah, right.
So, this is more general.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, noting, eh, as I did in my, my question about the high numbers, it seemed like both high numbers in general, but then also especially, uh, it seemed like Mara and Lanier, um, uh, in terms of teacher resignations or, or moving on and whatnot. Are there any other, like, innovative strategies we could use to recruit? I know it's a crisis, not a crisis, I don't want to use that strong a term, because we use, this happens every summer in terms of people coming and going. But are there other recruitment tools and mechanisms that we could use? And then, the other question is, how much are principals involved in the recruitment of new teachers?
You, uh, I mean, yes, sir. Uh, Madam President, Board of Trustees, if you've got more suggestions, then I am open to them. We are paying signing bonuses. We got housing allowance. Oh, my goodness, I will wash your car. And then, and then on top of that, though, we have a very comprehensive, very solid recruitment team that includes not only, uh, Ms. Chambers and the HR team, but principals and, and district-level staff and, and even other teachers. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, it's, I was going to provide this for you, uh, and I'll give it to you now, if I may. As you, uh, when you get this, you'll receive it. Every university within the area, uh, of immediate reach is listed here in all of the recruitment efforts that we're making in those areas. The total traditional education major graduates at Alcorn was twelve, Bellhaven twenty, Delta State twenty-four, Jackson State eight, uh, University of Alabama was a hundred and two. But for the others, at the time of this printing for spring twenty sixteen, a- absolutely zero teachers, uh, traditional education majors. So, I mean, we're working feverishly, really, and, uh, and like I said, I'm wide open for any, any other suggestions.
What, what are, what are your perspectives on what needs to change at the, um, at the state level in order to be able to recruit, train, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, I think that, um, maybe some consideration on the eight, on the newest qualification of a twenty-one on the ACT. Uh, I think we should be mindful that when we, most of us take the ACT, we take that when we're seventeen years old. It is a college readiness test. The actual test for teacher preparation is the praxis. And so, I think the emphasis may have been placed in a space that's, that makes it more difficult for those who are going into the teaching field to actually get in. Uh, you know, so, the, the challenge with what I'm saying is, y'all know, let me just say, I just got to say whatever I got to say. Whenever you say something against the state legislature, you're putting some sort of bullseye in a place that you don't necessarily want it. And that's obvious. Uh, there was legislation up there last session with my name on it. And so, I'm real careful not to discredit or to, you know, to say bad things about the legislature as a whole. I will say that we have some very strong, uh, proponents and lots of good friends up there on the hill who are fighting for us. And we're grateful for them, like, uh, Representative Wooton and, uh, Senator, uh, Norwood. Those are the two that, that I'm, that we have constant contact with. As a matter of fact, Senator Norwood was texting us from even the hill at the time the things were happening, asking us for help. Uh, but I, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. So, the only inroad I think we have is the state Department of Education is helping us in a great, uh, way by allowing, um, limited services. There's, there's a new provision, most recently, I think, that, uh, would allow them, uh, to issue some sort of license while we get the actual training for the praxis done. So, we're grateful for that. And we have a plan in place now with, uh, a current vendor Kirkland to provide that training. So, for teachers who come in and they need to pass the praxis, we have the mechanism in place. We can do that. Uh, we just need those who are, you know, hardworking and dedicated and love children to step on in so we can take care of you.
So, you're saying, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I, I just need to add to what you said. We need to give it our legislature and ask them for more time.
Yes, sir.
Until these teachers can actually get through.
Yes, sir. That, that would be extremely helpful.
Uh, well, so, just this, the limited service thing that MDE is offering, would that, um, I don't want to say ensure, but that would potentially prevent what happened last fall with, um, however many it was who had the licensure issue?
Right, so we, we, we did it the other way. We gave, uh, temporary licenses and had to take them back after a certain time. This year, we won't give them. They'll come in as limited service, then they'll, we'll put them in, uh, to this praxis training. But then ultimately, after the paperwork is done and, and approved by state, by MDE, then we will be able to, uh, offer them a, a firmer license, so.
Dr. Gray, when will the, the Kirkland group start the practice training?
We have to have some conversation with them about that, but as soon as we have more information. But Carla Kirkland has agreed to do it, and so now, we just have to put the plan in place.
So, do we have a number of candidates already prepared for them, or we just, do we need to make open announcement?
Oh, well, we, I need more time to, to speak to that. I need more time to speak to, so I can speak accurately to you, uh, about it. But we know how to make the clarion call, and that is, once we do know the, the number, we know how to reach out, you know, and, and send the blast out for teachers, because they've been asking anyway.
Thank you, because we certainly don't want to, what happened last fall, that was, we want a different path.
And that will not happen again. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones? So, we're, those in favor? Thank you.
Consideration to hold an executive. Hand keeps going.
I know, right?
Consideration to hold, uh, an executive session.
So move.
It's been moved that we consider, um, holding, uh, an executive session
Do we need to say?
For the purpose of. Those in favor? Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.